We call this meeting a Plaskett County Commissioner's order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have been given our minutes for November 3 regular session and the executive session to review of the motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the regular minutes and executive session.
We have a motion in a second to approve the regular session and the executive session both from November 3, 2025. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Approve and sign claims of payroll number three, 23. You've had it. Those have been sent to us. We have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve the claims of payroll number 23. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Disaster emergency declaration, rescind letter.
Rochelle, the EMA Director gave us a disaster emergency declaration, rescind. It's for the burn ban. And she is just wanting to rescind the declaration as of October 1, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion to rescind the letter from the burn ban.
I'll make a motion to rescind the burn ban.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to rescind the burn ban letter. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same side. Next, we have conference request for the Highway Department. Gary and David going to the County Commissioner Conference. Commissioner Jenny Kniebel going to the conference as well. CDC Nathan Orger attending Economic Development Association Conference, as well as the Small Business Leading Workshop. I'll make a motion to approve the conference request.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Being none, those in favor of the conference request as listed, say aye. Aye, those opposed. All right, on the agenda, John, information and vehicles concerning the recycle and transfer station.
Good morning. I'm here because we talked about the price increases proposed. And so this morning, that's what we're here to discuss. Do you guys still have a copy of my proposal?
What's your recommendation, John, as listed here?
I believe what's listed here would be reasonable for right now. And then come back maybe in six months or a year and address any changes that might need to be made. I think if we increase too quick, you know, that would be bad. But I think going to 10 cents a pound would be sufficient at this point.
So the recommendation would be to raise the current rate 10 cents per pound. Minimum charge would be a dollar. Bag prices, white 13 gallon kitchen bags, $1 to $1.50, 32 gallon bags, $1.50 to $2, and 33 gallon and up, $2 to $3. Tire prices, car, excuse me, tire prices, car tires for $4 to $5, semi tires for $8 to $10.
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any tires that you do not accept though?
No.
It's all tires.
So, yeah, car tires, truck tires, semi tires, agricultural tires.
Very good. Well, I think that sounds more than reasonable. I'll make a motion to approve the change.
I do as well. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve the proposed changes as read. Any further discussion?
The only thing that I would ask is when would you like it to take effect?
I would say January 1 of 2026.
I agree.
Okay, sounds good.
So we have a motion in a second to approve the proposed changes that would take effect January 1, 2026. There no further discussion, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Thank you.
John, I did send you an email and you responded to me. We have some money with the district waste, is that correct?
Solid waste district, yes. Yes.
So do you have to request those funds within a certain time period?
Yes, mid-December is when I have to have them spent, which they're already allocated to be spent. I have a repair that I have to pay for and then tobacco. Because I have money from the county and then I said I would match that money. So I'm looking for the right deal. Couple, the last two I've looked at have just not been the right tobacco.
Right.
So just waiting for the right one.
Okay, that has to be done by mid-December.
Yeah, I think she said November, or I'm sorry, December 15, I believe is what she said.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nathan?
Morning, everybody. Couple of things here for you first. So you just approved a handful of conference requests. And as I was preparing to submit my request, started wondering about something. Teresa may have some insight into this as the auditor. I have yet to find an actual written policy for conference requests that the county has. Whether it's something that had been given to me to put on the website, something in our personnel policy, something in our code of ordinances. But I got to thinking, like, I think it's a no-brainer. Commissioner Kniebel and the highway guys are going down for multiple days in Indianapolis. I require, things like that. It's a no-brainer that we should be getting approval. But I'm wondering if there is some room for flexibility so that there's not quite as much maybe micromanaging. Do we have a policy that says I need a conference request if I'm doing a webinar where I don't have to leave my office, let alone town, but there is a registration fee? Something like this lunch, this Chicago Federal Reserve luncheon. It's, it's a maximum half day out of my day. The fee is only $50. I'll probably drive straight to Melbourne from home, so the mileage won't even be the full distance between Winnebago and Maryville. Seems like there's probably some set of criteria the commissioners could adopt that we don't have to come every time. We're going to spend a half day doing some professional development. If there's no hotel, no extended period, I don't, I don't know what those criteria are. That's for the commissioners to decide. But I thought maybe that might be something to cut down a little bit on processing every single request for things like this and to give clarity. Maybe some department heads are doing webinars that require fees and just, you know, the few times that those come up, I, if I do them, I do requests just to be on the safe side. But it just seems to me like there's probably some line where it's a little bit excessive to ask the commissioners to, for me to spend $30 to sit through a 90-minute webinar where I don't leave town.
I think other, I think I know other government agencies have struggled with that. So I think we can have some policy.
I don't know. And, you know, I don't, like, I don't know what the exact criteria should be. If there's an overnight stay, if there's a, probably that should be an automatic. Or if a certain cost, but it seems like there's probably some room for us to be trusted to make decisions for ourselves and our employees without having to come to the commissioners every time. Susie wants to spend half day at a tourism marketing meeting or something.
There's some accountability with state border accounts as well, so even with mileage and things.
Just, just, just a thought I had as I was submitting these. Got a request for invoices above departmental limits again. As we all know, the council is considering an ERA designation slash tax abatement request from Doral for the Mammoth Grazing Lands Mammoth Pasture Solar Project. As was the case with Baker Tilly, I'm asking for permission to spend more than my $7,000 departmental cap on legal services from both Riley and Ailer and Barnes and Thornburg for their assistance in drafting of an economic development agreement. As we did with Baker Tilly, I will ask Doral to execute reimbursement agreements for both of these firms, just as they did for Baker Tilly. And Mr. Ailer, actually, he and I talked about this, wasn't sure that his billing would even reach that threshold. But I wanted to be cautious while ensuring that the county has no long-term cost obligation for these services.
Would the reimbursement go back?
It would, well, typically when, and I don't know if there's a consistent policy, when I do that, I don't worry about getting it re-appropriated back into my budget. It just goes back into Fund 1112 and then it's there to be appropriated as needed. But I, I've never had the need where my budget has been so tight, I've had to come back and specifically I said it go, we get re-appropriated and go through that whole process.
But they, Doral would reimburse the cap.
Yes.
Okay, as opposed to the.
As we know, in past instances, we've had concerns about the paper trail and we're do it this way, that, you know, and one of the issues in the past was that while it said, you know, they're supposed to pay the county directly as opposed to how it ended up happening. We never, in addition to putting it in the EDA, so there was a question of whether it would have been reimbursed if the EDA hadn't been executed. We're doing it a separate agreement so that it happens regardless. And we never, I don't think, actually assigned responsible party. We never said it's Kevin's job or Laura's job or Nathan's job or a commissioner's job to invoice the company. It just was sort of left vague. And so this will, as we did with Baker Tilly, clear up any ambiguity. It's my job to get an invoice from Baker Tilly and get sure it gets paid, or from Riley and Ailer and Barnes and Thornburg in this case, and my responsibility to invoice Doral.
Very good. I would make a motion to approve the request of $7,000 or more departmental, which is the departmental cap on legal services for both Riley and Ailer and Barnes and Thornburg from, to draft an economic development agreement.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. We have any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to the courthouse project. Again, no new change orders, project finances. We have a current contingency balance of only $4,000. I have spent only $4.44 directly out of the contingency since last reporting. But I had to transfer nearly $16,000 to our IT line item to make sure that the most recent invoices and the little bit that will still be forthcoming can be covered. We have about $41,000 total in our tranche of funds at present. I am expecting to cover invoices for the last furniture restoration project, signage, exterior and interior, the additional order we did. The last furniture order, some rowing services and a couple of IT odds and ends, like, right now because of some of the, because we had to take down the dish that beams this, the service from the courthouse over to the West Annex. The project is paying for EMA Coroner Office Internet Monthly Bill right now until we have a long-term solution to that issue. Things like that. And then I think we've got a copier, an extra copier in the Justice Center basement that's on lease through the end of this year that we're actually covering. So it's mostly odds and ends like that. Don't have an updated total at my fingertips, but Ton and Blank still has a fairly healthy balance in the construction contingency. But that has recently covered the roof repairs, the ongoing window caulking and a few painting and electrical odd jobs. Any questions on finances? All right, project progress, as I just alluded, caulking is happening right now and roofing has been finished, the roof correct work. Handful of smaller tasks remaining ahead of us. Couple of odd jobs still to be done by the electricians, nothing major at this point. Installing the additional signage, both interior and exterior when it arrives, the outdoor display case and the final furniture order. Updating some combination locks on vault doors and addressing the following issues here in the meeting room. Potentially adding another webcam or two, replacing the bench and continuing to work on sound quality. He hasn't confirmed the date yet, but our furniture restorer should be bringing the small piece we need to replace the bench with a refurbished, refinished table later this week. I have a tentative plan for relocating the bench, but I'm not sure that it's the best use. Just don't know where else it might work. So, and I sent an email out to all the department heads last night. I am happy to hear any ideas for where we might put it in a location that it would be serving a practical purpose and not be in the way. Be visible to the public since it is an important part of this building's history or both. Right now, the idea I have, it's visible and it's practical, but I don't know it's the best use. So anyone who has any ideas, please feel free to share those with me. I was not in attendance at last week's council meeting, so I didn't witness it firsthand. I understand there were concerns about the in-room audio over some of the HVAC system. I did watch parts of the meeting on YouTube and with the addition of a few, the rest of the flat microphones at that desk, the sound from the meeting table seemed to be pretty clear and consistent. And the little bit I have checked in today, it has been. But there were some concerns with the microphones at the bench. I, with Kyle Dibble's guidance, I made some adjustments to the settings for these microphones. There's a, there's a particular setting called the gate where there's like a minimum decibel level it would pick up. And so we lowered that gate substantially. And I do know that I could hear John pretty clearly when he was speaking and I stepped into the room. So knock on wood, that is getting better. But I, you know, we'll take a listen afterwards and double check and see if we need to make some additional changes. And I'll consult with Rowan regarding the in-room settings to see if there is something additional we can do to make sure that when especially the HVAC is running, that is not blanking out sound coming out of the speakers. Eventually, I do expect to add some acoustic paneling to help with the echoes. I have talked with Kyle a little bit. We might need to buy some additional microphones if we cannot get the settings right on these old guys to carry it through into the YouTube. As I said, it does seem like tonight this morning has been a bit better. I'm also going to inquire as to whether installing a couple of wireless speakers kind of at ground level, maybe in the back corners. I don't know if we have outlets back there or not, but if that would add to the sound quality to supplement what's coming down, given the heights of the ceiling.
When sold somewhere.
Was that?
You're going to consider it somewhere.
I'll talk to Kyle first and then look at what our options are. That said, these, any additional expenditures for the sound system as well as acoustic paneling, potentially webcams, that sort of stuff, will have to wait until Ton, probably have to wait until Ton and Blank has released a construction contingency, just because I don't know that $41,000 will cover the costs that I know are forthcoming and this additional indictment. If, if we get all the invoices covered and there's still been, be able to expedite that, but I can't commit to that until I know how some of those last invoices come in. Any questions on courthouse project?
Yes.
The signage outside the offices, we all have our sign, the signs were repaid years ago. Is there any way we can back, like Laura and I, you know, we can't be, the assessor and the, well, the assessor and the boarder as well, too. They have to come up to the window, you know, like office, even though I know we're pretty much in the same spot except for the assessor. I don't know. I just.
Probably.
Those are very, they're part of this building and happen forever.
Probably. We could probably talk to Larry and see if he could do that, but I don't see.
Do all the departments have them?
Yes.
Um, all of the ones who were in, I'm, I'm pretty sure all, all of the historic constitutional offices who were in here do. The rest of us do not. We just have the new signage.
It makes sense. Yeah, people complain about not.
I might start itching a little bit because they don't all, they're not all identical and my OCD might trigger, but I don't think there'd be any problem with asking maintenance to do that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, Nathan, maybe you spoke first, but out front here along the sidewalk, that's the signage.
So the interior signage will be mostly some clarification things. So Teresa won't need a piece of paper taped to her window anymore that says come around to the corner. There'll be actually arrows both by her door and supplementing the directional signage we have in the corridors saying service counter this way. We'll also have an extra auditor's office sign at her service counter in addition to one at her door. We'll do that with the treasurer's office as well because in the case of treasurer's office, the door is on the other side of the old doorway there into the old vestibule. So it's not as obvious. So inside it'll be things like that. We'll replace the paper maximum occupancy sign, that sort of thing. Outside, yes. There'll be three signs that will have to be affixed to signposts and driven into the ground directing people not to go down the west side steps. So there'll be one at the ramp there at the sidewalk, one somewhere between the Market Street sidewalk and the building, and one at the north steps coming down to the basement so that people are no longer going trying that. And then out front, I mentioned the display case, that display case will be large enough that Teresa or I or Carla or the surveyor, whoever is, whoever has a meeting coming up, be able to put the agenda out there so people don't have to come into the building or even up to the front doors to see it. It'll be in a weather protected case. And there's also room in there that will have some signs, one of them will say no public entrance at the top of the stairs and have signage with arrows pointing to either side of the stairs directing them to the public. So that will all be addressed when those signs come in.
How is the progress coming with the veterans of the past?
Slowly but surely, Taylor has been scanning those in. We do, I, I've got to look into some software because it turns out what she had been using has been a trial. I need to see if we need to pivot on what we're using or if the software cost is reasonable just to go ahead and get that. Once that's done, what I want, you know, we have an extra computer that we will use to, that will actually upload them to and will use to control those screens down in the hallway. The one thing I have to figure out with Rowan's assistance is if there is a way that we can set it up, you know, because we have multiple departments already who do have laptops in the hallway. But when we're actually giving somebody control over public display screens, it gets a little concerning. But if somebody actually wants to be able to pull up, you know, Grandpa Joe's photograph as opposed to waiting to, that sort of thing. But that, Taylor has been working on scanning those in.
I know you're aware of this, true. There are programs that are touchscreen where the public type in a person's name.
I do not know if the monitors themselves that were installed are, but yes. But that, that, that is something I've thought of after the fact that might be nice if we can figure out a way to give people access to, like, do a search and pull up a family members as opposed to just waiting through it. A normal setting, I think presumably it would just screen, scroll through, but if somebody wants to be able to do that, or at least make it easily accessible to a county employee to do that. You know, if we don't want somebody being able to get on there and like, put a virus on there or something. It might be that the computer itself is locked behind a door, but the mouse and keyboard are publicly accessible, something like that.
Thank you.
Last thing I have for you is regarding a county comprehensive plan. As you all know, back in August, a committee that had included Commissioner Kniebel and I, Councilor T. and Azimi and our building inspector had interviewed two planning firms regarding a proposed update to the plan as we prepared to apply to broker for a CDBG grant. At the last minute, we realized that the lowest cost option offered by the preferred consultant exceeded what the board had approved between the grant and the required local match. So we did not submit the application because the county is the applicant of record for the Dariel Fire Station project. We are unable to apply at least until February and it might be May, depending on whether they are funded this time or not. So there has been a push from council leadership to stay on track with this project, particularly because they would like to use an updated plan reflecting fresh public input as a guide for the council to develop a framework for allocating future solar project revenues. Mike, correct me if I'm getting anything wrong here. I believe President TD wants the council to discuss self-funding the project using already received solar project revenues, county cash seemingly out of my office's budget or a combination to pay for the project rather than pushing about three, six, nine months for the grant. This being the case, I have drafted a new, much more robust request for proposal for this project and developed a list of, I think, 13 firms I'd like to send it to. We would even for a self-funded project, go through the same committee process where a committee would review proposals, depending on how many we receive. Narrow the list down to however many we wanted to, I'm interviewing, and then have the committee make a recommendation to the commissioners. I'm awaiting feedback from our building inspector, the president of the APC and a couple of others. Leanne Wright with the Community Foundation of Plaskett County, who had first raised this issue in February or March, has reviewed the draft and offered some helpful suggestions. I am asking the commissioners to greenlight my sending this proposal out and publishing it online once I have made any further adjustments based on solicited feedback. And if and when the council reaches a consensus upon funding it.
Nathan, is there a reason, I mean, we have the interview process and we, we did have that one company. Is there a reason you don't want to stick with that one company that you want to open this up again?
I think that part of it is they would be very good and we will have more flexibility with how we pay for it and what the cost is, but given given how few applicants we had, and I think in part that, that reflects that the notice, the, the, the RFP that Curpsy uses is very bare bones.
It's very what?
Very bare bones. It, and, and I don't think it has to be that way. Maybe we could have supplemented it, but they, they use something that is relatively tight and just draws out the, highlights the basics required by the state code and federal law so that it can be used as the legal notice, as opposed to a more comprehensive RFP that would actually give prospective consultants a sense of what our needs actually are. And so I am hoping that with a more robust document that really breaks down what our expectations are, kind of provide some context. Let's know about the controversies and the potential funding sources we have through solar over the last five years. Recognizes that we recognize how much things have changed for us as a county since the last one was done. We might get more feedback if we show that, like, we have put some thought into really highlighting our expectations out of them, as DeBose is saying, just meet the state grant requirements.
Okay.
I certainly want to send it back to HWC and to Kimley Horn. I just think that if we are redoing it and we are not kind of limited to the very, to the point RFP that Curpsy uses for grant projects. to the point RFP that Curpsy uses for grant projects, we might find that there is somebody out there that submits a more interesting proposal. And maybe HW's, maybe we get eight responses and we decide we want to interview four. Maybe HWC is one of those, but somebody who didn't think it was worth the time to submit last time does, and they really wow us with their, with their interview. I do know that a handful of firms had reached out and asked for a complete document and all I had to give them was what they had already seen. So there might be more, like I said, interested if they can actually dive in and say, okay, the county knows what they want. They know what issues, they know what their primary economic sectors are, they know what changes they have faces, what troubles they have, what the potential risks and strengths are coming forward, and they can step in knowing a little bit more about what this is going to be.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. You need a motion, correct?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept, um, take a look at it. Uh, Nathan's proposal for comprehensive plan to be able to send that out once adjustments are made.
I'll second. Motion in a second before we continue with the proposals, send them back out. People as it's described, any further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Thank you. Unless you guys have any questions about anything else, that's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you. Leanne Wright?
Hello?
Good morning, commissioners. Um, I am Leanne Wright, Executive Director of the Community Foundation of Plaski County. Thank you for your service this morning. And with us is Katie Serma, our community navigator and also, um, an instructor in the yoga program in the jail. Uh, this morning, I'm here on behalf of Lindsay Bart, who's the director of the program in the jail. Uh, she is unable to attend this morning as she is also a full-time school teacher. So she sends her regrets and me in her place. And this morning, we are requesting use of opioid settlement dollars to fund the yoga in the jail program for another year. And we had requested funding last year and we're successful in getting that, um, program started in the jail. Um, I sent Lindsay's, um, write-up of the successes over the past year. Um, and Katie is also here to answer any questions about the program you may have. Um, we are requesting seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars for a full year of programming. And this program has proven effective and is well-received by both inmates and jail staff. And we are just asking you to renew that funding for this year as it does align with the abatement share and exhibit E of the opioid settlement dollars.
How much money is in the court fund? Approximately?
More, seventy, ninety thousand dollars. Quite a bit.
Seventeen thousand, one hundred?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you, you said, did you receive that? I can recall.
The opioid settlement money?
I don't recall getting the specs and information as far as the.
This part, yes, um, I emailed that with the, uh, request to appear. I wasn't. My apologies. I did not realize I was supposed to email that to you. I sent it with the request to appear. So I do apologize. I will rectify that immediately and send you the report for last year.
Is there information you can share from the report?
It's really full.
And lots of data, lots of, um, information, um, of the program impact and how it's assisting our individuals in the, the jail. Um, we have a ninety-one percent attendance rate, uh, in the program, uh, individuals we, the first cohort we had, we actually had to, um, shrink the numbers because we only had twenty-four Mads and thirty-five individuals signed up for the program. Over the, um, course and duration of the class, those individuals were able to attend the program because of individuals being released from the jail. Um, we, the growth continues and, um, we have a hundred percent, um, satisfaction rate from the jail commander and the officers and staff that are on board saying that individuals that are attending the program have less tendency to be disgruntled and, um, there is a five percent decrease of, uh, uh, five percent decrease recidivism rate and relapse prevention.
Five percent decrease in?
Yeah, so the chances or likelihood of an individual coming back into the jail has, um, uh, decreased by five percent.
I hate to sound, that sounds like a low price.
It's more than zero.
Yeah, it's actually a high rate of, um, so where our recidivism rate started, we were at fifty, if I'm not mistaken, if I recall correctly, we're at fifty-three or fifty-five percent. We have decreased down, no, it was fifty-eight and it's decreased to fifty-three percent in the jail of an individual coming back into the jail. Prior to me coming in, we had, uh, as the navigator and doing all the other programming, we were up about, I want to say eighty percent or so with recidivism rate. And Sheriff, you might know some of those numbers. I don't know if you remember any.
Yeah, that goes without any, Katie, I can hear what you're saying.
Okay, um, so recidivism rate before, before the jail program, yoga program and the navigator program, what was your recidivism rate? Do you recall?
Eighty-seven, eighty-five percent. And the numbers have went down in the jail. Is that what you're talking about?
Correct, yeah.
When I first came into office, they were about one hundred and eighteen, one hundred and twenty-three. That's improving in the federal prisons. Now we're down in between sixty and eighty prisons. That's because the programs are working that you guys have authorized. And what Katie's doing here, her program is, is very well received, very well, it's a very good, uh, attendance rate. It gets them out of their cell, gets them doing something. Um, I think it's a very good program, worthwhile program. So I apologize not being able to hear. That's the reduction, the five percent thing, because we're, we're simply down on our numbers and that's a good thing. So your programs are working.
And I, I have a negative position, trust me. I, one hundred percent, I think, favor that. I just get a little impede when you talk about yoga.
Yeah, that's it.
I do. And five percent from yoga, where could that money be better spent, better used elsewhere? I don't know.
I understand your point. I think more importantly, granted, we don't want repeat offenders. I'm not arguing that point, but I think more important is what Chris had talked about that I've heard before is that these people, uh, the inmates are active in a positive way during the day. Chris said it gets them out of their cell. Uh, you know, it's better than just sitting there thinking of possible ways to get trouble or not do anything. It's a positive activity is how I gather.
But I watch on the cameras and I've got voice like a mirror and these, these people are into it. So she doesn't know what I want.
That's all right.
And also this, this opioid settlement money isn't intended to sit. It is intended to be put to use and this is an excellent use for, for those opioid, opioid settlement dollars.
Seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars?
Yes, sir. Actually seventeen thousand and ninety dollars if you want to get exact, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the seventeen thousand, ninety dollars as requested out of the opioid fund for this program. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor to approve the request out of the opioid fund, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jo Lynn, Art County Clerk.
Good morning. Um, Jo Lynn Bany, Plaski County Clerk. And Election Board Secretary Rebecca McLeary is my voter registration deputy. And we are here this morning representing the election board. Um, we would like to ask your permission to use the currently vacated security office across the hall from the clerk's office to hold early voting in April and, um, October of twenty twenty-six. There's a lot of hands-on work involved with our early voting. Um, twenty-eight days of early voting, including by statute, the two Saturdays before the election, we have to be open and offer early voting. But we would like to be able to use that room for now. Uh, side note, noting that hopefully someday there is security in there. Um, this tax season was a real eye-opener for, I think, everybody in the building. But, um, we would love to be able to just hold it right across the hall from where we were. Um, that being said, I would like to take a moment to again thank Gary and Dave and Jean-Pay and the whole crew at the County Highway Department for all of their help last year with early voting and delivering the voting machines, uh, the day before and after Election Day. But if we could have the use of that room, we would really appreciate it. It would ease our struggles tremendously.
Nothing else in that room currently?
A couple of desks. I had considered the possibility that if the county does end up hiring an IT director, we might put that person in there. But we do have a room right off of here that at least for now, until any other changes are made, could be used for that person. Uh, really, it was just that because the servers are down there, it might make sense. But this, it is more critical that they have an election space where they have ease of access for the public and they can see it and get over there than that the IT director have to, you know, be on the same floor as the server. It's not like the IT director's going to have to be monitoring the servers every day.
Jo Lynn, there's a lock on that door.
Yes.
And is that key limited?
I believe so, yeah.
We would just have to make sure that she got a key from maintenance spoiled.
It's a perfect location, I think.
So do we, because I think for weeks after November last year, my little car was on autopilot. Every time I'd go north, it would turn into the County Highway Garage whether I wanted to or not. Because we would make five or six trips a day up there. So if we could have it just across the hall, that would be so much easier for us.
I'll make a motion to give Jo Lynn, the clerk, the use of the security door next door.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve the security office across from the clerk's office to be utilized for early voting. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is VS updates.
Good morning, commissioners. Tim Hollensworth with VS and I'll be providing the update. So before I move into our scheduled project updates, I want to provide two real-time safety notices that came in this morning. First, we received a report of a semi in the ditch near seven hundred west and two hundred north. There were no injuries reported at that location and the traffic management crews are mobilized immediately. Second, we received confirmation of a sep- separate accident at State Road thirty-nine near five fifty south involving two of the developer's employees. They were in their personal vehicles on their way to work. No other vehicles were involved and both individuals were life flighted to area hospitals. Uh, that is the extent of the information we have at this time and we will continue to monitor the situation. With those updates noted, I'll move into the specific item, project items. Uh, for the Mammoth Project, first on south, the project is near complete. Only minor installation items remain and they do not impact the current schedule. For the first central project, progress is steady. Fencing is eighty-three percent, piles are ninety-five percent and trackers are forty-eight percent. Modules are seven percent and the underground DC is seventy-two percent. And then for the second central project, fencing's at sixty-two percent, piles are fifty-eight, trackers are sixteen and those modules have not yet started. Uh, some funding updates and administrative items. Uh, there's a meeting scheduled between Jacob, the county attorney and the developer's attorney regarding future funding for the compliance monitoring budget. Uh, once they finish that discussion, any updates will be communicated with the commissioners. And on delivery route, update maps are being finalized with Gary. These will be shared with your review before anything is implemented, following the same process we used before.
That meeting is on Friday?
Correct. Uh, road maintenance and site access, road conditions matched what we saw in our most recent inspection report. There are going to be plastic barricades installed near three hundred north at five hundred west around the corner. And then repairs on one hundred north between six hundred and seven hundred went smoothly. There's no updates on that lighting concern, but we continue to follow up and document it. Uh, the billing department and assessors coordination, the billing department and the assessor continue to review fence setback measurements. The developers preparing an updated KMZ file for them. A few short setback locations were identified and are already being corrected by the developer. We are also waiting on an updated completion timeline for the permanent fencing near the drainage ditches. Uh, the highway department noted that snow and ice last week made travel around the county road two hundred corridor difficult. Uh, heavy job site traffic added to that strain. They suggested considering pre-treatments such as sand during storms. It is still an open question whether it falls under the developer's road maintenance responsibilities and we will continue to discuss this with them. Uh, some resident issues that we want to bring up. The, there was a property encroachment complaint. A resident reported that the contractor had entered and parked on their private property. We had immediately notified the developer and requested documentation. The developer responded that morning and confirmed the issues have been addressed. So the developer's team and, and contractors are not permitted on that property. So that issue was immediately escalated and corrected. Uh, we have a second issue that really came in and this is involving the resident traffic and safety concerns. We have continued receiving reports of residents reporting near misses involving solar vans at the intersection of two hundred north and five hundred west. Uh, these are typically during shift changes when traffic is heaviest. The developer noted that there's limited control over those workers as that is outside of working hours, but we are continuing to push them for these reports. Uh, the highway department has already added and proposed several mitigation measures, including temporary signage. And we are continuing with both parties on a realistic next steps. And then the last concern we received was a broad complaint letter. We also, it's, excuse me, sorry, fighting a cold over here. The complaints were about farm loss, wildlife impacts, worker conduct and property values. The message contained general objections to the solar development rather than specific compliance violations. We are preparing a professional written response clarifying our role um, as that is compliance monitoring with the county's approved plans and ordinances. We do not control project economics, land control, or the developer's operation outside of the approved plans. Onto the other projects for May Apple, there's no new updates. A coordination meeting remains on schedule for later this month. For Moss Creek, no new updates since our last progress meeting. The next meeting is set for December third. In Bottle Brush, the next meeting is November nineteenth. Um, the landscaping screening site visit is scheduled for this afternoon with VS staff and county staff. The next onsite inspection is scheduled for this week. There's upcoming construction meeting on Wednesday. And weekly progress meetings are scheduled throughout as necessary. And that concludes our update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tim. I do have a couple of questions. On the fines, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
On the issuance of fines, I know I had requested all of the fines in that one time period. I don't recall that you put the precise time period on there, but these were the, it was the twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars in fines from the end of July, first of all. Was that, has that been received?
Yeah, I thought we relayed you the fine that we had issued and inside the fine, it has all the photo documents of when those violations occur, including a map of where those violations.
I received that. I'm just asking, was the, was the money paid for that?
I will have to go back and double check and get with the, um, treasurer because we are not in the loop as when payments are sent in. We are working on getting that corrected. Uh, usually what happens is when a developer makes any payment, whether it be our fines or the building department's fines, we are brought in afterwards trying to sort. we are brought in afterwards trying to sort out how those fine, where those fines are coming from. And so that's where we are brought in. So I will have to get with them to verify that payment.
Right. And at those intersections, you did send that to me and it has all, where all of the different flock cameras are.
Say that again?
You did send to me where all of those flock cameras are installed at the different intersections.
Yes.
Does every, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to remember, is every vehicle that goes through those intersections looked at by VS? Because I'm getting complaints from residents that say they believe there are many more vehicles that are on these roads that are not supposed to be on these no-solar roads. I'm talking to over one ton. That there's, that the fine amount does not seem to match the activity of violations they are seeing. So are those, is every vehicle that passes through those looked at?
So yeah, the, the camera records upon motion, so every time a vehicle drives past it, it will record it for a handful of seconds. We download all the video footage and as we've been operating any vehicle that's outside of a normal pickup truck, so any dump trucks, semi trucks, tractor trailers, anything that's a larger than a standard vehicle, that is what we've been pursuing fines on.
Okay. And you are issuing fines, is it every two weeks?
So that process has taken some time to go through these photos because we're looking at thousands of photos a week as it captures every vehicle, animal, anything that is occurring out there. So we have numerous fine, or numerous violations numerous photos we're going through to verify the violations. And so we are recording those as quickly and promptly as possible.
Can you tell me what, what week you are up to in processing those?
Um, I will have to come back with you on that exact data because I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was my question.
Hey, Tim, do you have an approximate figure for the total amount in fines that is you, that VS has issued to Doral thus far?
We do, again, I don't have that number right in front of me, but I can get that to you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Tim, if you could, let me know. I'm just curious. Are these fines, I mean, are we seeing a lesser number each week of vehicles on these roads or are these fines not making any difference? Because what I'm hearing from residents is a thousand dollar fine is not making much of a difference for these trucks being on these roads. So I would like to see a decrease in the amount of traffic that's on these roads rather than an increase. And I know because everything's moved to central currently, most of the traffic is in that area. But I would like to know if it's making a difference, because what I'm getting from residents is you're not doing enough as Commissioners because this is not deterring them. It's not deterring, it's not, it's not lessening the activity.
I wouldn't say, I, I think I'm safe to say we have not seen a decrease. Either they've stayed consistent or they've gone up. Now, we do have more cameras in the central location as there's a lot more restricted areas that we don't want them to go. So that could be also a reason of why we have a higher number of photos and violations in the central, in the central region.
Okay. And so I guess I'm going to ask Commissioners, if we're not seeing a decrease, do we need to be doing more for these vehicles that are on these roads?
I think there's one key thing that we talk about vehicles and Tim, the vehicles that could get fined are the larger vehicles. It's not the, the vans or the pickup trucks. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
So I think that's something we need to think of and for future agreements. And what did you have in mind? Or what were you thinking about trying to increase it in the interim?
If we can, I mean, I'm in favor of increasing the fine to see if that reduces the number of violations. We have to do something. And, and currently, things are not, they're not, I don't even think we're maintaining. I think it's getting worse. So is it a possibility to increase these fines?
Well, in order to do, in order to do that, you're essentially renegotiating the contract. That's the only issue. So I mean, I can talk to them about it, but that's part of the agreement. And so I, I don't think that the county's suis bond can just increase fines without the agreement on the other side.
Okay, so let's talk about moving forward. We're in agreements right now. You're negotiating for us and agreements.
Yes, and I have a meeting on Friday, so I can bring that up if that's something you'd like me to do.
Is that in a road use agreement?
You're talking about the fines. Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
I'm in favor of increasing, increasing.
Do you have an amount in mind?
I would substantially increase it.
As far as on fines go, they vary. I've seen as low as seven hundred and fifty dollars. I've seen as high as fifteen hundred dollars. I, I'm happy to kind of look at some other road use agreements, but I mean, if you wanted to substantially raise it or double it to two thousand or whatever, I'm happy to go to them, but they would require an agreement.
I would be in favor of that.
I would be in favor and I'm, and I'm saying this because it's the largest project in the United States. And we're, this county is suffering some major safety risks. It is not a deterrent. And based on the size, I would say five thousand, but if we want to go twenty-five hundred to see if that makes a difference, we can't go back and renegotiate this.
So I think on our next one, I do think fines need to be increased. I also think we need to have something in the agreement about a monitoring company, a larger amount of money put into an escrow, so we're not renegotiating that with the term in there that it will continue to be, X amount will continue to be put in there. I, I do believe that there needs to be something in the next contract about providing money for additional police officers to monitor in that time period out there. And I think we need to look closer at requiring signs to be put up X amount of days before construction starts. I think there's a lot that we can do ahead of time proactive because we're learning from this. I agree with you, Jenny, that it's the largest one and we need to be more proactive in understanding and learning from what is currently happening here. And I think I truly have a list that goes longer than this, but I think you're getting the gist that yes, we need to beef this up.
One question I would have for Sheriff is as to the issue of money for, to, as for the issue of having more funds to pay for officers, is it, my concern would be is it not just a funding issue, but a personnel issue? Do you have enough, even if the money was there, enough officers to do that?
Because we had that discussion outside this morning. I'm very concerned about safety out there right now. Nobody knew the size and scope of this five years ago, me certainly included. I had no idea how big this was going to be. I get very frustrated with, with what's going on here. Okay, we had a very serious accident out there on 39 this morning. Jenny and I talked about that. I can't get any outside help from the state police. Okay, there are limit on officers, but to your question is, we have a company called Off Duty Solutions. If we don't have enough officers to fill those positions, they can reach out to surrounding officers and they can do that. I think we need to increase that. I spent all afternoon Friday out there trying to catch one of those semis. I talked to a couple hunters and they said, yeah, we had a couple semis going down the road this morning. Almost hit me. That concerns me. You know, when they almost get ran over by triaxles, by semis, she's right in the middle of it all. I'm out there all the time. I have ground out there. I hunt out there. I see the size and scope of this. Nobody knew this five years ago. I'm very concerned with what's going on out there. The central location is extremely busy right now. We need to increase our patrols out there and if we don't have enough officers, it'll pull officers from other counties. The state police can put in for that, or no, I take that back. The county officers can, I think, right? Yes. Stark County can, White County can. We've been filling it with our officers, but if we don't have enough officers to fill that, they can fill in. So yes. More money from the developers is going to be a huge help. We need to get more hours out there. The roads are going to get bad. I don't know how much more they're going to work, if they're going to work through this. But we, we need to get more officers. You know, when Don reached out and with Off Duty Solutions got us a few more hours, that helped. But we need to be out there the whole, the whole time that we're working. We got multiple, multiple parking lots.
It's not a personnel issue, it's a funding issue.
It's a funding issue. I, I think we can, once, once that opens up, there's a schedule. It'll say the month of November, the month of December. It'll open up a couple shifts and then officers from all the surrounding opens up. If they're on Off Duty Solutions contract, they see there's an open shift. We've been able to fill them so far, but it'll open up for officers all over the place. Yeah, I'm concerned about the safety. I really am at this point. I didn't know the size and scope of this a few years ago. We have an extra twelve hundred drivers out there. We've had, how many accidents over the weekend? Three. This one out here on 39 is a very serious accident. It was two solar workers. One blew the stop sign at 39 and 550 South. I don't know what's happening going to be. It's very serious, if not worse. I'm very concerned at safety out there. So yes, anything, more, more money would certainly help. I'm glad you brought that up. I wanted to say something, a public comment, but I guess I don't have to. So Jenny and I talked about that out, out here in the hallway and I, I want something done. Yes.
Thank you, Chris. I, so I guess one of my, another one of my questions is, when does, is this all being negotiated currently in this plan?
So the, the meeting for Friday, the, the, I think specifically, and Tim preferred to jump in if I'm mischaracterizing this, but is to A, talk about funding through the end of the year for the, because I, my understanding is, is that there was going to be enough to get to approximately Thanksgiving, but not enough to get to the end of the year. And so we had to address that. And then also there has been, again, my understanding, resistance to some of the violations that have been issued. And so discussing that, I think that would be an appropriate time to address other modifications of the agreement. The purpose of the agreement is that it's an agreement, so it would require both sides to agree to modify it. I, I would certainly, I, to me, it would only make sense that while I'm, me with Mr. Sherman, and I believe Tim's going to be on that call as well, to bring up these other concerns and certainly address if we wanted to double the fine from a thousand to two thousand. I agree. I mean, to me, just seeing other projects that I've worked on, whether they be solar, whether they be wind, the number of violations seem to be substantially higher than I've ever seen before, to the point that I, I don't know that it's having the effect it's intended to have.
Right.
You know, it's supposed to stay so it doesn't happen and it's not doing that.
So, so I'm, my question also, and thank you for that, Jacob, that in, in, in developing this next agreement for the next piece, if this eighty-eight hundred acres comes through, when do we as Commissioners have the opportunity to be involved in that? Because there are multiple things that need to be included in that agreement.
The next agreement for that road use project would be your time to solidify these updated requirements, which now that you know, I, I think the county's had to go through these growing pains of, of learning the do's and don'ts of this. And now you guys are in a position to beef up this, that contract after having this experience.
This has been discussed at several meetings. We've asked, you know, and I know Gary and Carl have been working on items as well as our surveyor on things. We need to, we've asked them, we've been looking at things. We need to be prepared for this next step. When we get to that next step of the road use agreement. And there's a lot of things that need to be added. And safety needs to be a top priority. I think we put in X amount of money and we go through this, this company or, or however that works. And I think we need to, we can't have a minimum amount. We have to really beef that up. Mike brought up a great point a few months, a few meetings back about having a, a yard or a holding area for semis and then for them to be escorted in. I think that's something there. I mean, we could go on and on, but we're thinking about this. We've talked about it. I've talked about it for several meetings. We've had discussion about it. But we, we gotta, we've learned and we have to move on and get the next one, the best that we think is necessary. And safety, we got to put a priority on that. Not that it wasn't a priority, but it's a bunch.
It is. Nobody knew the size and scope of this. You know, I had a semi on 500 North at 100 West a month or so ago. He was going to go down 100 West. It's a gravel road. That's where his GPS took him. I said, there's no way you can go down that road. Luckily, I caught him before he did and I stopped him before he went on down that road. Or 200 West, I'm sorry, 200 West.
But I had one that was good trying to, and he says his GPS is taking him down the roads. It's not. So I think this is my personal thing. We're trying to make everybody go down the same road so we don't have so many repairs. I think we're all opening up some of the other roads and make them repaired.
You know, Gary's done an excellent job of marking these roads. Yeah, 500 West and 14, there's two big green signs right there. There's more signs on 200 North. He's done an excellent job of marking these. If they're driving past those, they deserve a fine. You know, hats off to Gary and his crew. I don't know what else to say. You're, you're passing a reflective green sign at night. You shouldn't be going down that road. So.
On the flip side, and I, I understand what you're saying, but I also, but, but my feeling is if we restricted the roads that they have to come in on, it requires less patrolling because you guys would know where they are going to be coming in. If they're coming in from all different directions. Well, I know, that's why I'm saying for the next one, we need to be very careful about what roads and to be able to maximize your services.
And they're Googled as tall. So I mean, you gotta have a little sympathy for the truck driver, but yet when the sign says no, and then they're stopped, they can't back up. All right. And it seems like we're making them go down secondary roads instead of the better roads. Let's let them go down the good roads and make them, make them good. Then make them like a expressway when it's all over.
My house is an expressway.
Like in White County, some of the roads they got there are seventy, eighty mile an hour roads. And you got a grain cart thirty mile going twenty mile an hour in front of you. It's a real hazard. But I, it just seems like we're trying to shove everything down two or three roads and still, and kind of secondary roads in a way, to my way of thinking. I mean, roads I'd never would have took. I can bless you because you're on the main road and that's, and I know that's going to be a headache.
We're all in agreement. We have to change and improve. So, Tim, what else you have for us?
That is all that I have for you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Data center moratorium. We, we do not have any language in our ordinances about data centers. Obviously, data centers are being put in and they're talked in every other county about our White County rumors of other neighboring counties with data centers. I truly believe we need a ordinance, ordinance for, for data centers. So.
I will tell you, White County just passed one in October. A six-month moratorium on data centers. I sent a copy of it to the U.
Just recently.
Yeah, it's, it's in the text.
Oh, just today?
Yeah, just so I can kind of look at it, but I have a sample template.
So how many people does a data center employ?
I've heard, depends on the size of it, that it could employ fifty people.
They'd be probably college graduates to.
Yes, yes.
So that's a good class of people that's.
That's on the, that's on the high side. I assume the number fifty, but depending on, depending on the size.
Yeah, it depends on the size.
But it would be bringing in the kind of people you want to encourage to come to.
Yeah.
I just think that there's a lot to discuss as far as the resources and the strain on the water and the electric. And I know the state is getting ready to do a big statewide water study, which needs to be in place. And I, I, too, Don and Mike, I'm in favor. And I, I, too, Don, um, and Mike, in favor of a moratorium for data centers. Um, my concern right now is that with all the work that, uh, the planning commission, building commission is doing. Just to get the language for the battery energy storage, um, that I don't want to tax. That department too greatly right now by saying you've got to have it done in six months because I think we're not gonna get the best. Product, finalized product if it's pushed that quickly. So I would like to allow them to have. The twelve months so that they can focus on the battery storage. And when that is done, they can move right into, um. For the battery energy storage and then move into the data, but I think it's gonna be a huge.
Where's the active data center at now?
Carl, New Carlyle's putting one in.
Is there any around anywhere?
I knew, there was discussion of one being built outside of Wilted, Indiana, but now with this moratorium in place, I'm sure that's all. Hold if not canceled, so.
But there's not a completed run.
They, they are, uh, there are data centers running. That's, uh, what we get on our phones, but I, I don't know where. Other than New Carlyle.
Yeah, but that's not up and running.
Correct.
And, and, and the White County ordinance, they, there's a discussion too about the closed circuit, open circuit. Facilities because I, to your point, I know that has a lot to do with, um, water, water usage.
I would, I would recommend the APC, uh, with this, do a closed loop system.
Oh, I would too. That's just for the, among the children and everything.
If, if we did a six month moratorium, Jacob, can the APC come back to us at month four? And recommend an additional six months?
So that's under House Bill, I think it's four twenty five, if I'm not mistaken. Um. And my understanding is that there's a cap on the extent of the moratorium. So. I don't believe under the current law, I don't believe you can go past a year.
Correct.
To that total.
Sure.
You're capped on it.
Okay, so but could you do six months and then do another six months for the year?
But that's my reading of it, but you'd have to, as long as you don't. As long as there isn't a gap that would push you past the twelve month window. So as long as you did it that way, from the ones that I've read. It looks like they're mostly six months moratoriums that are being put in place, but I believe there's one. In White County, there may be one in Whitley, I think it's Whitley County that I looked at, um. That both of those are six months. So what you want proposing, to me, makes sense and seems to be in several other counties.
What's a six month?
The six month is, seems to be whatever counties.
My only concern is to, they have so much on their plate right now with the battery energy storage and updating some of the solar ordinances.
Well.
Can, can we give them the twelve months so that they can breathe?
The other thing too is under, under, uh. The, the new law that can affect it in July is, it takes a lot of the local, uh, zoning authority away. From the county as far as when a permit's required, when, when and under what conditions that permit was required. Under, uh, seven oh four twenty five. So my thought would be is if you, if you did the six month. And then we could address it when you get to the end of that. I, I don't think there's anything in the law that prohibits that. It would just have to go back to the APC. Um, for their recommendation of their.
I, I understand. I just don't want to rush product. We, we've. This county doesn't need to rush things through right now. We need to give things considerable thought and be educated and informed. And that kind of timeline to me just. I would just be more in favor of just saying after twelve months, let's get it done. Let's get it done well.
Has, has anybody contacted to get some more, uh, data center?
But we know that they've contacted. We know there's, um, discussion in White County.
Start.
And start.
Yes.
And, uh, and rumors are in Jasper County as well.
I don't wanna interrupt, um, but you guys were asking a question about where some of these are currently located. And probably closest to you would be Lake County and La Porte County both have them. Uh, Morgan County, Saint Joseph. I believe Hamilton and Marion, several around Indianapolis have them. Uh, this is Jenny, and by the way, just wanted to let you know where there are some ordinances that might be available to you.
Jenny, do you know which one is the most recent?
Uh, I know there's, uh, one underway in Saint Joseph that's been pretty controversial. Uh, but La Porte, Porter, uh, Lake all have them. Hamilton, Allen County. Uh, there's some of the Fort Wayne Indy area in those counties.
Or, but my question, I guess, is are those recent builds? What, which one would be the most recently completed?
Um. I'll have to look, Jenny. I just am aware of where some of them exist. Um. I know Morgan County has a proposed one, as does Saint Joe. Uh, and they have existing ordinances, but they're currently under proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I think the one, I believe it is in Hammond that is operational is fairly recently operational. I, I've actually, I've been to that one. It was actually a surprisingly quiet facility. Uh, but it's also close to the lake, so I suspect that they've got more options for the water intake than just going straight into. Groundwater.
Yeah, that's a digital, uh, I think it's called a crossroad. Yep.
Okay.
If you wanted to do, yeah, and I, that's kind of a policy question legally, you can do it, but it's a policy question.
But if we did a six months, they could come back. But if we make a recommendation today, the Plaska, they at least get the ball rolling.
Right.
Then the, uh, Plaskett County Advisory Plant Commission could come back with a, a counter.
Which could be the one year.
Could be. So I think we need to get something moving.
Sure.
So I would recommend, um, that the Plaskett County Advisory Plant Commission. Um, start working on, if they've not already, uh, UDO for data centers. Define a data center as a facility or portion of a facility housing network, network computer systems and associated components. Such as telecommunication equipment and storage systems used for remote storage, processing and distribution of data. Require a closed loop cooling system instead of water usage. And other considerations, but not limited to reasonable setbacks, height limits, generators, noise levels, buffers, equipment. Lighting, battery, storage enclosures, building permit requirements and calculations for permit fees. I would, uh, part of this as well would be a moratorium for six months, only at this time. Uh, to do UDO language on the data center. That's my, my motion.
I'll second it. That makes sense.
Motion in a second over what I just read. They, uh, no discussion, being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Okay, moving on to discussion items. We do have a, um. Meeting at ten o'clock, right? Draving toward at ten o'clock. Uh, PTO changes, um. Uh, Natasha came to us about PTO changes, a variety of things, but one of the items that makes sense to me. Uh, would be for us to allow all county employees to use their PTO time, paid time off time. Not comp time, et cetera, for, for an additional month, and that would expire Ju- January thirty first. Of the year. There's a lot of other PTO that was discussed, but I think that needs to. We, that needs to be more discussion in a committee to look at that. So. I would make a motion to, uh, allow PTO time to expire on January thirty first.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in the second to allow PTO time to expire on January thirty first. Any discussion?
That is technically probably an amendment to the personnel policy. So. I think the council probably has to be involved in that conversation too. And I think. If I recall correctly, the policy requires that any changes to the policy actually being written and not writing and not just a simple motion.
Okay, so we'll do that and we'll approve this today and we'll get something in writing and.
Make sure the council gets their.
All right. Those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Uh, hospital contract, Jacob, could you give us a short update on that?
Yes, there was some additional proposed language, um, that Natasha provided concerning competitive bidding. And, uh, non-disclosure requirements that were sent. I think those were sent back on November fifth or sixth. Um, it's my understanding that they've been, and I confirmed with attorney Sam this morning, that those are under review from the CEO of the hospital. Um, for approval. And I, I did send in a follow-up that the county's ready to move forward as upon their approval. So that's in front of the CEO of the hospital, doesn't matter.
Sure. I'd like to get moving on this one.
So I've, yeah, I've, I've stressed to him that, uh, that the three of you are anxious to get this executed. Uh, as soon as possible. Someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
With the additional.
With the additional, right, with the additional language for, um.
Competitive bidding.
Thank you, competitive bidding.
Yep. Motion in a second to approve to move forward the hospital contract with the amendment as Jacob described. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Uh, solar road safety concerns, we really hit on that a lot, didn't we?
We've hit on it a lot, yeah.
We do have concerns. We need to make adjustments for the future. Appreciate everyone's efforts with that. Any further items, any with that or Mike?
No.
Department head updates and evaluations. Uh, we will be, uh. I believe we've, uh, earlier discussed, uh. The importance of doing department updates and evaluations. And we'll set an executive session at eight AM on Monday, December twenty second. For the purpose of discussing with individual personnel. Any other comments or items with that?
Now, do we want them, we had talked about having them kind of present. Do we want that at commissioner's meeting? I would expect. I anticipate just, just an update on their overview of the year.
Yeah, possibly in January doing that, like a past and looking forward.
That would be fine.
Okay. Think that'd be good.
I don't think we'd want them all on the same night, so we'd probably need to go through and decide who needs to come at what time and then come on a. Review cycle maybe or something.
Um, I have proposed some meeting dates for two thousand twenty six as well as the holidays. Teresa went through that and made adjustments and made changes to that, and those have been presented to us through email. We have a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty twenty six meeting dates and holidays for commissioner.
I'll second it. We have a motion in a second to approve the two thousand twenty six meeting dates and holidays as presented to us. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Uh, parking on the north side of the courthouse brought to our attention and a lot of our employees. Brought all of our attention. A lot of employees are parking on the north side here, which restricts parking for, uh. For users of the courthouse to come in and use it. Um, and then we got early voting will be coming up, uh, in twenty six. But we've also had, uh, people coming in, pay their bills, et cetera. So we would. I would encourage the staff, all employees to park elsewhere, um, away from the north end of the parking lot. Comments?
No, I, it just makes sense.
Yeah, you gotta have your customers more or less.
Don, I would. I would add, I, I know not everybody is comfortable doing it, but. A year and a half or so ago, Indot removed the no parking signs along the east side, and there is enough width that people can park along the highway. Um, it's usually how I get my morning exercise, jumping in and out of, but, but that, though, there are several spots along the east side of the. Property as well that can be used.
So I, I would just, uh, Teresa, if you could put a memo out on our behalf, put the county commissioners on there. Um, we, we encourage people or the employees to park elsewhere other than the north side. Yeah. All right, uh. One item, I have, uh, contacted a company called Performance Services. They would come and look at the West Annex. At no cost, kind of give us an evaluation of the West Annex about possibly remodeling that. No cost, no obligation. Do either of you have an objection if, if Performance Services comes? Very good. All right, at this time, we will, um, entertain some public comment. Please come to the podium. Uh, we ask that you, uh, state your name and residence, speak once, and please limit your comments to two minutes.
Um, good morning. So I was going to talk about this way. Okay, is that better? Um, we keep talking about the safety issues out on the solar areas. And it seems that however we're addressing it, it's not particularly working. I mean, I think we've talked about it since February, every month since then. Um, the scope of the contract that they use for off-duty solutions. Does not include the scope, in the scope, it doesn't include to be monitoring traffic control. So when we're saying like pull them over, do this, do that, that's not in the scope of the work of the off-duty solutions. So it's like we're saying the same thing over and over, but we're not offering a solution on how to actually fix this. So I'm thinking that instead of just having an off-duty solution contract with just solar. The county should also have an contract with off-duty solutions. So that way, when they're paid by the off-duty solutions, they're out there monitoring the roads and not the scope of the work. If that's make, am I making sense?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
So you want to say it again? Okay.
They are, go ahead, you say it in your words.
Okay, so right now, there's a contract with off-duty solutions. And the scope of the work is not to, it does not include the monitoring of the roads and whatnot. And because the sheriff's department doesn't have the ability to have all these extra people out there because the per, like Chris said, the personnel is not there. My idea would be to have a, another contract with off-duty solutions that would be partnered from the county. And then ask Doral or whatever solar developer would to fund that. And that would be. Instead of hiring a new officer and having the obligation of paying them and keeping them, and what happens if we don't need them after the solar projects are over? Then this is another way, creative way to be able to do that and still have the, the safety, to address the safety issue.
Okay, that makes more sense. Sheila, what is their current responsibility then?
I don't, I don't know. I, I don't have the scope in front of me, so I don't want to misspeak. Um, but I know that that's not part of it.
Is it more like security?
It, it, yes, it's like saying.
I, I can answer that if you like.
Sure, Fred, thank you.
So we're for off-duty solutions. My responsibility to them is I call them every day and ask them, what do you need to review today? So then they ask us, hey, we're having some traffic issues up here. We're having some issues, complaints with the citizens. They'll send us to certain stop signs, whatever. But our job is to go from lot to lot to lot to make sure they have security initiatives within the company. So if they don't want us outrunning traffic on thirty nine, they don't want us outrunning traffic on four twenty one. That's their request. But to me, it's like I'm working security for a wedding and you're asking me to run traffic out here on four twenty one is what you're asking us to do now. And I hate to say that as a negative thing, but you're asking us to do two different things. So extra view solutions is paying us to do this. The, the people in charge of everyone, okay, why are you guys out here doing this over here? Or we're asking you to do your job. We're paying you to do it over here. So I, I agree with what she's saying. If you have a separate contract, you control, what that definitely does is getting paid by your contract. To go out and do extra patrols, do whatever, do what you're asking them to do. But what they're asking them now is we're going outside the scope of their contract at this point.
So the contract really just simply says that you're gonna issue tickets and citations by, for traffic violation.
No, it does not say that.
It needs to say that.
They, it needs to say we're allowed to go outside the scope of solar and work outside of that. So what happens if I get in a trap? My traffic stop turns into a criminal investigation.
Definition of solar would be all traffic. Yeah, their employees coming in, et cetera.
But the other thing is you're interacting with more than just solar traffic.
Correct.
I think it makes sense. I mean, I'm, it's not my decision, obviously, but at least then we're not having the same conversation over and over and over again.
And the other thing that we ran to too is it's going to be a first amendment violation, a fourth amendment violation. I can't target solar. See, I gotta, I can target the areas of the solar project, but if I walk up there and I target solar, I'm doing nothing more than racial profiling.
Thank you. So it needs to say traffic.
That makes a lot more sense. So, so we've been paying for somebody to really not help the residents of Plaski County, but the solar developer, I mean, they're the ones.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying we're having that conversation over and over. So instead of, I mean, I think we need to get to the root of the problem instead of having the same conversation over and over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any others that we'd like to speak? Sherry, you'll be the last one and we'll suspend the meeting.
So I live here in Plaski County. I live in Woodhamack. My mother lives at, uh, one hundred north and five hundred west. I am the one who, um, issued some complaints last week. I was nearly hit by a solar van. It was not off-duty. They were working. Um, they turned in front of me at a stop sign. They turned in front of me as I was turning left. Um, they have no regard for public safety. An additional stop sign is not going to make them stop. They had a stop sign. So I will just say accountability for the employees that they work, that these people work for, that company needs to be held responsible. I'll tell you, this last time was only one of probably four or five times that I've been either a near miss. We all travel these roads. Public safety should be first in this county. I'm sorry that we didn't look at it the first time when we did the contract. But this is a public safety issue. There has been numerous times over the last seven days that there have been incidences in this county. We're overtaxing our responders. There's nothing, there's nothing more dangerous. Yes, I know that, you know, we do a lot of, you know, stuff. Our law enforcement does a lot of things. But being on a highway for an accident is dangerous. We are putting our responders out there every day and taxing what they do. Not alone, we're not providing for safety of our county residents or people that are the public on our highways. I hear all the time, there's nothing we can do. I call the card on that. That's ridiculous. Our public safety should be first. I get that we're, we're bringing money into our county, but at what time does that money override the safety of a resident? Does it have to be, you know, who's the next one to get hurt on the roads because we've neglected our duties? You know, I will say, I looked up what the meaning of an accident is. Accidents are something that occur without intent or negligence. And that's taken, you know, I got that online. As a county, we've neglected to sufficiently address this problem. These are no longer accidents. We have not done our due diligence to prevent the traffic issues in this county. I would implore new actions be taken. We can't sit and say, this is no longer an issue. We can't do anything about the current one, but we should move forward and do something with the next one. I totally agree. We need to do something moving forward. But what happens to the project that there's, that is here now? Does it take a life to be taken? I would just ask, is that, you know, does it take someone who is elected in this county to be affected directly by an accident? Does it take, you know, someone, a landowner to be affected for this to make a difference? I don't know what it takes, but I can tell you, not cool.
Thank you. This time we'll suspend the commissioner meeting and move into the Draining Ford meeting.